All right, it is just after 6:30. We are still trying to get the projector working in the room, but we do have the TV screens running, so I am going to proceed with starting the meeting. So, good evening. Time is now 6:32 PM on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, and I call this meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom. This allows public participation and for members of the board who are remote to participate. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their computer or tablet by clicking on the link provided with the meeting agenda. As tonight's meeting is a working session, we will not be taking public comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. As this is a hybrid meeting, please permit me to confirm that all members of the board and persons anticipated on the call are present and can here be heard and be seen. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Starting in the room, Vice Chair Ms. Barry.
Yes.
And I'm Joe Pato, the chair. Moving to online presence, Mr. Sandin.
Yes.
Thank you. Both Ms. Hay and Mr. Lucente are unavailable for tonight's meeting, so it will be just the quorum of three members conducting this work session. Any votes taken tonight will be taken by roll call. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, the Town Manager. Check in, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're clear. Kelly Axtell, the Deputy Town Manager.
Yes.
And Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk.
Yes.
Thank you. So as tonight is a working session, we will move immediately to our items for individual consideration and begin with item number one, which is a discussion on noise bylaws regarding landscaper and construction noise amendments being proposed for town meeting. Mr. Malloy will lead us through this discussion.
Yes, thank you. So, as the board may recall, on July 24th, we went through a number of changes that the working group has been working on for the past several months. And I was thinking probably of the different attachments that I had provided. Probably the one that shows the differences between July 24th and this current version for this evening is probably the cleanest one to look at. We can refer back to the other ones if we need to or talk through some of the different changes. There were a number of changes that were suggested by the Select Board after the July 24th meeting. The working group met a couple of times since then and has made a number of additional changes. The first change is in 80-1, and it follows through throughout the entire document where we had previously, the current bylaw refers to citizens. We have changed that to residents. And so that appears in 80-1 as well as 80-2. And then in the definition of noise pollution, we have added language that the definition would go from, would read, "The condition resulting when a sound source exceeds 80 decibels in a residential zone, 85 or more in all other zones." And then the next change is under 80-5. In that last one, I know that there has been a number of comments about, you know, why are we setting a numerical standard of 85? I want to make sure that people are clear that the bylaw currently states that the intent on construction is 85 decibels. And what we've done is made it 80 decibels in a residential zone and recommended 85 in all other zones. We're not seeking to increase, but the current bylaw allows, we're actually looking to decrease what is allowed in residential zones by 5 decibels, which is a 50% reduction in the noise being allowed. And then the next one is in 80-5, under Section A1. We've just changed it for it. It said 85 decibels, and we changed it so that it reads the limits prescribed in the definition of noise pollution, so that it includes both the 80 and 85 decibel numbers. And that is the same that we did in subsection 2. And then in subsection 3, it was determined that really we don't have to say contractors and residents are permitted to undertake the last thing, because one deals with contractors, subsection 2 deals with residents. So, section 3 just basically incorporates both of those, and the words contractors and residents seem to be duplicates of what was really needed. Under Section B, at the last Select Board meeting, the board had determined not to use what we refer to as the old Blue Law holidays, but to use all holidays recommended or recognized by the Commonwealth. And so we've added all of those ends, and it's very specific, because that is one of the complaints that we received about construction work happening on holidays. Under Section I, subsection 4, there was a correction to a reference from 80-5H to 80-5I. And also on subsection 9, there was a correction to have golf courses, being example from subsection I, 5, and 6, not through 7. Then going down to 80-6, there was just editorial correction, mechanical devices and vehicles, as being plural, not being singular. Under 80-8, subsection I, little or one, we added the word credential noise mitigation consultant. There was a concern that the people who were being hired may not have an expertise. And then under subsection 2, we've just added the objective of the bylaws to keep the maximum. Currently, this is where the current bylaw says, "The objective of this bylaw is to keep maximum noise levels under 85 decibels at the property line." We're changing that to be consistent with the definition of noise pollution, so that it reads "Under 80 decibels in residential zones and 85 decibels in all other zones." And then there's just a clarification on correction on, and try to improve the wording a little bit, on blasthole drilling and pneumatic jackhammers, and a correction to take, to correct the next little section there, versus pneumatic jackhammers would be included, which is a correction. And then the, I believe, the next change is under 80-9A2, again, where we've changed citizens to residents. And then under 80-11, we are just reflecting the maximum fines that are allowable under the state law. And so those are the changes that were proposed since the July 24th meeting. I'm not quite sure if the board has any additional specific questions. I know that there have been a number of emails from residents, as well as to emails from attorneys representing groups of residents objecting to a lot of the changes. And it seems to me that a lot of the concern is that we're increasing the amount of noise for construction activity that can be allowed. And I want to make it clear that that's not the intent of the working group. The intent is actually to reduce the amount of noise from construction activities allowed in residential zones and basically maintain the status quo of the amount of noise that is allowed in all other zones, being commercial and industrial zones. And so that's basically the additional changes that have been made since the last presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. So colleagues, this is a working session where we can review these changes and further discuss our perspective based on, or the reading and for what we've heard from the public. I do have a written statement from Ms. Hay, which I will read shortly, but I want to give an opportunity to board members if they'd like to speak first. I also have some of my own comments. And as a working session, you're free to, I'm not going to call you in order, so if you'd like to speak, just indicate and I'll recognize you. All right, so I'll start by reading Ms. Hayes, and then I'll give some comments when no one else is ready yet.
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sandin.
I just didn't want to jump in if others wanted to speak. So, I have to say that I am of the same mind as many of the folks that have been writing into the Select Board, that my take on the charge that the Select Board gave to the working group was to find a way to better protect residents from the types of noise that has been disturbing them. We have received substantial amounts of complaints in the last year about construction noise and concerns that we have been having difficulty enforcing that and that we hear stories about people that are unable to have their kids in their house. They have to take them out of their house in order to enjoy peace and quiet. And so one of the things that I'm looking for is, does, and one of the questions I'm asking myself in terms of whether we, if I'm understanding correctly today, you're raising this in the context of, are there any questions about this? But the question that I have is, the sort of overarching question I have is, should this be brought to town meeting at this current state? And my conclusion is no. I don't think it should be brought to town meeting, because I don't think that we are actually providing better protection for our residents than the current bylaw. And I have a number of different concerns about that. One, the 85 dB, as Mr. Malloy has brought up, is a 1972 OSHA standard for occupational hearing loss, which is a standard, which is where OSHA has declared that if you have 85 dBs, you will create hearing loss. And my question, I question whether the town wants to establish a standard that is the absolute minimum standard required to prevent people from having hearing loss, especially when we've been seeing many residents have sent us reports, scientific reports, New York Times articles, that show that it has been documented that there are substantial health impacts of noise far below 85 dBs, that for adults, 70 dBs is the only safe level in terms of being sure that you're not having hearing loss. And for children, youngsters, 60 dB is the safe levels. We've had a number of folks say that we need, we've heard from a number of folks saying that we need to ensure that we are allowing continued construction. And I agree, we need to have construction. It's critical to the future of Lexington. But when I look at sort of neighboring communities that are doing a lot of construction, I look at Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Billerica, Braintree, and the list goes on, who have established construction limits which are substantially lower than what we are proposing here and have also done a number of different things that we're not doing in this, like protecting residents, establishing some standards outside of construction at the lower level and providing some limits that are different at nighttime than during the day. And so when we look at Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Billerica, Braintree, they are establishing a 75 dBa standard in residential neighborhoods for construction noise, and they're establishing a 60 dBa limit for daytime noise and a 50 dBa limit for nighttime noise. As I've mentioned to the Select Board before, I've also looked at a study that was done of 419 communities. And what they found in that study of 419 communities is that 85 dBs was the highest level established in any noise bylaw out of all of those 419 communities. And my question would be, does Lexington want to be that outlier that is establishing a noise standard that is at the absolute maximum guaranteed highest level of any bylaw in this study?
Mark, that study that you're referencing is that the study from 2016 that was of the largest 500 communities in the United States, is that the one that you're referencing?
I don't know if it's the 500 largest communities. It's the 419 communities that they studied. But what I'm raising is, I think we should be, and one more concern that I have, which I've raised with the Town Manager and I'm quite concerned about, is that there's a, we're saying that there's, that these limits, the limits that we're discussing would apply to ledge work, correct? Not to overall construction work. We're applying this just to the definition of ledge work. Am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Town Manager?
It would be for work that's being done on ledges, yes.
Yes. And then, but there's an exception that says that essentially there is no limit for construction noise other than for ledge work noise. So right now, the way this is being proposed is unlike Boston, Cambridge, Summer, or any other community that I've seen that establishes a level for ledge work, but also establishes a level for ordinary construction work. And I'm quite concerned that we might be having no limits whatsoever for any construction noise other than ledge work under this current bylaw.
So, one of the problems that we obviously have that the city of Cambridge or Boston doesn't have is that they're not really dealing with ledge at this point in time. Boston has an L10 level in residential areas of 75 dBa, as you said, but in residential or institutional areas, their maximum noise level is actually 86 dBa in their code.
But that's for in a public way, doing construction work in a public way. So that's a different kind of thing than, you know, so it's sort of like doing street work in a public way as opposed to ongoing construction. So I do understand the difference that you may need to be doing something different in a street while you're constructing a street, but that's, I don't think, what we're discussing here.
And I think Cambridge is somewhat different as well. There's a lot different than than just 75. There's this variable.
Yes.
And it goes up above the 85, I believe.
Right, right. And there's also, so what I'm trying to find, what I'm trying to find a way is to thread the needle here, so that we had massive amounts of complaints from our residents and our neighbors. And they said that their lives were disrupted to the point that they were thinking of moving, that they were bringing their kids away from their homes in order to be able to sleep and things along that lines. And when we asked, "What's the maximum noise that was measured by the town at the site?" The answer was 77 dBs. And so if we're establishing a standard of 80 dBs, by the way, for those who are not familiar with dBs, it's a logarithmic scale. So 3 dBs doubles the noise intensity. People don't hear that as twice as loud, but the actual noise intensity doubles with a 3 dB increase.
Mark, if I could stop you for a second, there are current bylaw states, the intent is to maintain 85 dBa at the property.
So what I would suggest is that's not exactly what it says. It says, it does say that at the end, but let's look at the language here. Before it gets to the point about 85 dB, it says, "A noise mitigation plan required under this section 80-8 shall, at a minimum, require portable sound barriers designed to reduce sound levels outside the barriers by at least 10 dBa." And so, so what the primary, the way I read the bylaw is that the, what's being required is that in the event that somebody is going to be doing ledge work for more than seven days, that a noise mitigation plan is required, and that noise mitigation plan is required to, at a minimum, have sound barriers that reduce the sound levels by at least 10 dBa. So let's take this, let's take this a little bit further in terms of the context of what we're talking about. So in this particular case, that we've had so many complaints about, there were months of ledge work going on. And if we're saying that the noise that we've seen from that ledge work was maxing out at 77 dBa, then a noise mitigation plan that required portable sound barriers to reduce sound levels would have reduced those sound levels to 67 dBa for the neighbors.
That's not correct. That's not correct, Mark. That, I want to make sure you're clear that the 77 dBa was outside of noise barriers that were constructed on that site. They had earthen-built noise barriers that were utilized at that site. It was 77 on the outside of that site, and it was above that inside of the site.
Okay.
The noise barriers. And I want to be clear that, you know, when you talk about threading the needle, the working group that worked on this looked at the noise bylaws and codes of all the cities and towns within the greater Boston area that we could find. And we did, we did actually try to do that, and we took very seriously the concern that that particular project was creating a lot of complaints. And the problem was that our current bylaw, as it's written, is not effectively enforceable, because it uses that language about what a reasonable person would find objectionable. And there's not a court in this world that's going to say that there are two people who are going to find the same amount of noise objectionable.
So let's move a little away from this for a moment. I mean, I think there were several things that this is trying to do. One is to remove some ambiguities that existed in the language that allowed for certain ledge work activities that, to the layperson, would have been excluded in the language of the bylaw, but in the legal reading of the bylaw were not excluded. And I think that one of the changes that we're proposing here is to remove those ambiguities. And I think that's very helpful and something that I want to make sure we do before the next construction season. I think that there is then a range of concerns around what is an appropriate limit. And we haven't been able to engage noise, sound professionals to really discuss what is appropriate, nor have we had a noise bylaw, a noise committee in operation for about a year. So I think that we will want to come back and take a look at that from a policy perspective of where do we want to be? But at the moment, we don't have a clear formula for where to move forward. And what was encoded in this draft essentially is what I would consider maximum limits and, you know, worst case of where we will end up. The, in reading this several times, there are other concerns that arose for me. One is that the reasonable person standard, which is used in lots of legal contexts, and so there are interpretations for how a judge would deal with it, used to apply everywhere, right? And it is helpful to put an absolute threshold that is unambiguous. But in doing so, we have now said that music playing in a neighbor's yard can be 85 dBa or 80 dBa, depending on which district, which I don't think was the intent, right? Because those, the sections on electronic devices, on fixed plant equipment, on stationary engine run-up, all of those refer to the term generation of excessive and unoriented noise, which previously included the reasonable person standard, but now no longer does and only has the absolute limits of 80 dBa in residential and 85 elsewhere. So I think for me, that's problematic. That was an unintended consequence in my mind of this edit. And one I hope that we can restore at least to where it was before, so that, you know, we will have the latitude to make sure that, you know, somebody playing loud music all night long can't say, "I'm below 80 dBa," right? That clearly isn't the intent of what we want here. I believe that we do, as I said a little earlier, we do need to constitute, reconstitute the noise committee, and we do need to include a clear participation of sound professionals to guide us along the policy. But that's not something that's going to happen very quickly, right? That's not going to happen in time for this fall special town meeting. I don't know whether or not it would be ready for an annual town meeting next year. So for me, that leaves me in a quandary, because I don't want to enter another construction season where the, what I'll call a loophole of certain construction practices not being included in the language continues. So I'd like for us to be able to move forward with nailing things down and without opening new doors, right? And Mr. Sandin, I hear your concern about, you know, this isn't sufficient, but that doesn't say we shouldn't do something like this as long as it is no worse than we were in our current bylaw while we are working to develop the necessary changes that meet community objectives. Because otherwise, we're going to be leaving known problems in existence that can be resolved. So, you know, I have a few more details, but the biggest concern was that we don't, by changing the definition, we don't open the door in these three other categories. we don't, by changing the definition, we don't open the door in these three other categories.
I, I would agree with those concerns, Joe.
Right. And, and Mr. Sandin, if we are able to nail that down, I would say that the this draft doesn't really change substantively the protections. I'm hearing you suggest it's inadequate and I won't dispute that. But it doesn't change what is the protection of existing bylaw for, if we were to fix those clauses that led to unintended consequence. So while I heard you say you didn't want to go forward at this time, I'm, I am wondering if, if you want to consider that what we should be doing is working the problem and, and short-term closing the known problems that we can fix. And we have Ms. Barry and then I also have Ms. Hayes' comment.
So I hear what you're saying, Joe. And I guess what I'm like is, what would that look like? Because I also share Mr. Sandin's concerns are, is this ready to go forward? Is this going to open a Pandora's box? You know, I found myself asking myself the question Mr. LaCente asks all the time of what is the problem we're trying to solve here? Because I thought we're moving in a direction where we were going to try and solve some problems. And then we've heard a lot from the community. And then just to follow up on Mr. Malloy's comment that he said he's heard from some attorneys, I'm not aware of that. So I don't know if the board is aware of that. I, I didn't see anything about that. So I'm just, I'm just concerned. Is there, is there a path forward to do this this fall? I understand your concern about wanting to do it before the next construction season. So I don't know what that would look like. I don't know if you've thought about that or talked to town council or anyone about that and what that might look like.
So, so I believe if we re, restore the reasonable person standard to the excessive noise definition, that brings us back to where we were. And it now has the language that says, by the way, these other construction practices that were previously read to be outside are in fact included in the, in the limitations of time of day and day of use. I think the other changes here clarify language, but don't make substantive change. What I would also say in, as a, a, a broad comment is, in writing the article language for this, I would want to make sure that we nail down the scope really clearly. So that at this fall special town meeting, the only changes we're talking about are to remove that loophole and, you know, clarify the, the, the dates of holidays, you know, really spell out, here are the changes so that we don't open the door for a a broad amendment process that could lead us to unexpected and undesirable places. I do want us to constitute a, a policy, a noise bylaw committee to work on, you know, here are the expert recommendations for policy in this area.
So Joe, if, if we could, so I take a little slightly different take on what you're proposing here. If we could just go back to the existing bylaw and only make the changes that you are suggesting on ledge work definitions and holiday changes, that's something that seems to me could go forward to town meeting. But I share Ms. Berry's concerns that there are so many red lines on this right now, that if we brought this with as many red lines as are here on town meeting with enough, with as many questions about those red lines, I question whether we would have a successful town meeting.
So we could review it. I certainly also want to have that public meeting next week first, so we can hear more broadly from the public before we make a decision. But I think in principle, yes, but I'd say that a lot of the changes that are here really are they don't go too far out of the scope and there are things you want. For example, there's clarification here on the noise mitigation plan, right? And that it, it increases the requirements for noise mitigation plan and grants the building commissioner discretionary power to require a noise mitigation plan, even if the, the ledge work requirements didn't trigger it. And those are, I think, improvements that are narrow and very helpful.
Well, maybe I didn't, maybe I wasn't clear. I'm, I'm happy to have instead of just a noise mitigation plan, a noise mitigation plan prepared by, I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. Malloy, credentialed? Is that the word you use? That, that sounds like a reasonable suggestion to me.
Right. And the intent there was to make sure that you didn't have, for sake of a better way of describing it, your uncle say, oh yeah, here's a plan, right? You actually have a professional who is recognized and not just, right?
Right. So I'm, I'm happy that that sounds fine. So, so if we narrow, if we, we sort of go back to a non-red line document and the only thing we do is fix these ledge work definitions and the holidays. And we have some specificity so that it's not your, your Bob's uncle that is providing the noise mitigation plan. I'm happy. I, I think that would be a good place to, to sort of plug the holes in the leaking boat. And then we can look later at establishing what the appropriate DBAs are. But I, I would, I do not want to see an exception that allows any construction noise whatsoever to occur. That is not defined as this ledge work having no limit whatsoever. So I think that is a bridge too far if that's in this.
But that, that's not something that was added, that exemption for construction, right? That would have been in the previous language, you were still constrained to be within what is defined as being excessive noise. And excessive noise is noise pollution and
I'm, I'm also concerned that the definition of noise pollution is changed so that it's now defined as only something that would cause permanent hearing loss. So I'm uncomfortable with any sort of noise bylaw that establishes the only purpose of this bylaw is to prevent hearing loss.
Given the time between now and when town meeting occurs, I think it's going to be very difficult to make all of the various edits. Because there are, there are substantial edits. And as Mr. Pato has said, a lot of them greatly improve the existing bylaw, but I'm, I'm, I'm hearing completely divergent opinions from the select board right now on where to go with this. And so I'm, I'm not sure what to do with this.
Right. I think, I think, Mr. Malloy, you're right. I should read that Ms. Ms. Hayes' view is and to, she has a page here. But effectively, what, what she argues is that this is a step, this is an improvement. And that she believed a lot more needs to be done. But she would rather do something rather than leave things the way they stood today. Essentially, you know, the argument of the perfect being the enemy of the good. The and so I think what you're hearing is a split board with discomfort that, well, I think a unanimous board saying this hasn't clearly addressed the issues sufficiently. And but a split board as to whether or not there is enough value in the short term. So, I mean, I think that would be the value of, of the public discussion next week was to hear more from the public on where things are and that we could then decide. But I, I'm beginning to lean toward the, there's not enough time to make it for the fall. Even though that would leave the door open to a construction season that suffers from the same challenges we had this year. But we could work to have the, a bylaw change for the annual town meeting that at least addresses the the ambiguity issues that we have now and does so with enough language change that doesn't create the problems that we're observing right now. And possibly we would have moved far enough to be able to get, you know, the policy direction we're looking for. But given that we at the moment have no members on the noise committee, my guess is it's going to take longer than, it won't be ready for an, an annual town meeting for anything more than just tackling the narrow.
Fall town meeting, you meant, fall town meeting, you meant?
Uh, no, annual.
You're saying you don't think it's ready for an annual town meeting?
I'm saying, I'm, given the discussion we're having today, I think that the only thing we're going to get in the annual town meeting is clear language that closes the loopholes.
Okay.
Because we're, you know, we're not, we're going to have to constitute a noise committee, get appropriate experts participating and draft language. And then have public engagement on it before March. That's, we're not going to stand up a committee, I think, before January, given the way timing it normally takes. Ms. Barry.
So you don't see a way to just deal with loopholes for this fall? In terms of how the article gets written?
I think I was hearing from Mr. Malloy, he didn't think so.
But I guess.
Go ahead.
No, I just, I thought you had said that earlier that you thought you saw.
I, I was hoping, but you know, I do know that staff spent a fair amount of time on this and it's not exactly structured so that you can just say only this small bit. And there's, you know, there's a lot of elements that, as you pull the thread, start coming apart. In my, my, my personal feeling is that if we re, restored the definition of what noise pollution was to include the reasonable person standard, we'd be back in the same place we were with regard to, you know, limit the reasonable person and a ten DBA over ambient, which was part of the older language. And that would cover everything. And then the rest of the language that was changed could go forward.
Have there been any conversations with town council about these changes?
Mr. Malloy?
Hang on a second. Not, not yet. I mean, they've been forwarded to town council, but we haven't had any conversations, significant conversations about them now.
Okay. So forwarded, but no feedback received?
Uh, no discussion. There wasn't a request for any feedback from town council yet. Because we've, we've still been just a draft form at this point.
Right. And, and just from a timing perspective, you know, if we had it at the fall special town meeting, there'd be time for the AG to decide to approve or not before the, the next construction season. If we only bring it, the annual town meeting, we shouldn't expect to hear much from the AG before June, July. So you're, you're into the construction season, but you know, you salvage half the year maybe. And I will say that, you know, we, we certainly were hearing complaints from neighbors on, around the large project beginning February, March.
Do you have no feedback from Mr.?
No feedback from Mr. LaCente.
Oh, Mr. Pato, in regard to the reasonably prudent or whatever the language is. That's actually, it's, oops, I'm trying to find it here. If we were, if, Kim, if you could open the total changes that's attached to the agenda there, there's one that has a red line of all of the changes. So what that falls under is under the excessive or unwarranted noise. And that's where it reads any, currently the bylaw reads any noise that disturbs a reasonably prudent person or results in noise pollution or noise injury. And we had we had removed disturbs a reasonable, reasonably prudent person or so that it would read excessive or unwarranted noise, any noise that results in noise pollution or noise injury. And then under the definition of noise pollution itself, it didn't, I don't believe it actually had that it's just that we added noise injuries is a condition caused by one-time exposure intense impulse sounds such as an explosion or by continuous exposure to loud sounds over an extended period of time. Noise pollution. Uh, the current bylaw reads the condition resulting when a broadband sound source raises the noise level by ten or more DBA above the ambient noise.
Mr. Pato, if I could make a comment?
Uh, go ahead.
So, well, I know Mr. Malloy doesn't like this study of the five hundred communities. It does point out that the nuisance standard that he's mentioning is contained in four hundred and eighteen out of the four hundred and ninety-one noise regulations or eighty-five percent of all the communities surveyed have that standard built in. And it goes on to say that most municipal noise ordinances rely on several techniques. As Mr. Malloy is proposing, having a, a a set limit of whatever DBA we set plus the nuisance standard, they say this is the vast majority of the noise bylaws contain both of those techniques. And sort of, and they conversely point out that out of these five hundred municipalities, only thirty-five or seven percent rely only on a decibel only standard. So I'm concerned that we would be an outlier in this regard.
Right, no, no, Mr. Sandin, I agree. And that was part of, especially given the context for activities like parties, music being played in the neighborhood, et cetera. Those are all things that are, you know, relative to the ambient and reasonable person. So, you know, setting that to an eighty or, or an eighty-five or even a seventy DBA limit would be troubling, I believe.
So what, what I was going to state is that just based on the board's discussion, that perhaps the definition of excessive or unwarranted noise, if we were not to strike the disturbs a reasonably prudent person or then that might address some of the concerns that are being raised as far as bringing this forward for the fall town meeting.
Ms. Barry is asking for you to say that again. Or maybe reinterpret what I heard, which was that if we were to restore the language that says raise the noise level, rather, the prudent.
So let it, so let me, let me try and make that a little clearer. If, if the definition of excessive or unwarranted noise continued to read any noise that disturbs a reasonably prudent person or results in noise pollution or noise injury. But if we had left that wording as it currently exists in the bylaw, so that would read such as that. I believe somebody's at my door. That that would perhaps address the concern that was just raised.
I'm a little un, I'm, I'm a little uncertain about that, shall we say. What, what I was suggesting was rather than looking at what's being proposed here and then taking a couple of things out, I was proposing we go back to the current bylaw and only fix the things that have that, you know, that, that need plugging, as Mr. Pato has suggested in our leaking boat. Um, the definitions of what ledgework are, the definitions of the holidays and having a credentialed um, uh, noise mitigation plan, uh, a noise mitigation plan prepared by a credentialed professional. Those three things, I think we could probably get even to a fall town meeting. I don't know if you still, if you would agree, Ms. Barry, or do you think that's a, a bridge too far?
Um, I think it's possible. I think the upcoming meetings, the hearings are going to be very important to hear where the community is. And I think we'll get a sense of what is, I've kind of called the other part of this Pandora's box might be.
Right. I mean, I think it's, it's essential for us to hear that the feedback from the first public hearing to decide whether or not to, to move forward, and if so, in what shape. Um, Mr. Sandin, it's, I think it's feasible to do what you're saying. The question is, who is doing that work by when to have a draft to compare? Right?
Good question.
Because I, you know, this has taken a fair amount of time. Um, by staff, started in June, Mr. Malloy, right?
Maybe in May, I believe.
Yeah, for the end of May. And, um, and, and so it's not non-trivial. There is a lot of material to draw from here. But I think if to get what you're looking for, you may have to draft that proposal. Cause we don't have a noise committee to hand it to. And I think staff have done a good job of trying to produce a, a enforceable bylaw. Um, and I'm not sure they'll be able to in a quick fashion narrow down the way we're talking about.
And there were a lot of, just to be clear too, there were a lot of other changes that are being proposed. That also makes the bylaw better. And as you, you can see from, I mean, we didn't go over these tonight because we went over them at the previous meeting. If you can see from what is on the screen right now under 80 dash two paragraph B. There are a lot of changes like that and change, some changes where you can see in 80 dash three now where a section was moved from one section to be more where it would show up traditionally in a bylaw. So some things were just simply moved from one area to another. And so, you know, I'm hearing, well, let's really limit the scope so we don't have so many red lines versus um, trying to improve the bylaw. And so I'm, I'm really not quite sure where the board wants to go with this is what I'm saying.
And given that there's only three of us here tonight, it's more difficult to tell you where the board is. Um, and, and our, our, our procedures call for making, we don't make major decisions unless all five of us are present. Um, and I would say, you, making a specific choice here is a major decision. I think it is clear that there is discomfort in where this stands. Um, want to hear from the public. And then that we would come back and decide whether or not to retain it on a fall. Um, uh, warrant. We are supposed to vote those fall warrant that on October 2nd, it is all written. So.
Mr. Malloy, could you tell us what the public hearing date is? I think there's one before October 2nd.
Yeah. It's, uh, September 26th, I want to say. I'd have to take a look at my calendar.
Right. It is next week. It was, uh, the message I sent out to TMA this morning. Making it clear that there was no public comment tonight, but there would be next week included the dates of the two public sessions. And I don't have it.
Hearing is based on this document. So while you asked Mr. Sandin if he wanted to draft a new document, you couldn't bring that to the hearing, because the other members of the board haven't.
No, 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 right. No, the only thing that could go to the hearing is this current material that we would get information on. And the, a, a redraft would be you know, a narrowing of what this is. And we decide whether or not that was consistent with what we were hearing from the public.
So, Pato, let me ask you a second question. You mentioned, uh, so, so the second hearing date is what?
The second hearing date is, I believe, um, the one is on September 26th. And the second one is October, I think 10th, let me just see, uh, October 11th.
So, Mr. Pato, could we? I mean, I'm, I should be asking, I'm not this, I'm not the scheduled person on the board here, but if we have a, a hearing that's after we call the, it seems hard to have a hearing after we call the warrant, and it seems hard to delay the warrant till after the 11th. Am I making this?
No, no, right. So we can't delay the warrant. The warrant is going to be signed on October 2nd. The language for this article can be narrowed, uh, before October 2nd. And, you know, depending on, you know, we can have a public hearing afterwards and then decide to IP it if it's inconsistent. If we decide that it's inconsistent with what we're proposing. Right. We, we aren't, we can't wait on a, on warrant language for the second public hearing.
But you were suggesting, Mr. Pato, that we should narrow the warrant language considerably. So I'm kind of interested in what you're thinking there.
Well, I want to narrow the language so that there is no broader latitude than what is in the current draft.
Oh, well, that's pretty broad. That's basically everything.
No. No, I mean, you can write it so that it's, you know, right now, the language is, I, I, if I recall correctly, it just says amend the noise bylaw, and it doesn't give parameters for what that, that amendment would be. We can certainly write it to, to say amend the noise bylaw to, you know, add the definition of what, um, ledgework is, you know, times of, um, what vacation days are, variety of other elements, including things like, you know, clean the non-substantive elements of the bylaw. So for flow that existed in the edits that are in this, uh, version. But it doesn't open it up to saying, okay, you know, let's change, um, the scope of landscape. Let's change the scope of, um, uh, other elements, which today, given the, you know, the broad language would be allowed. But this isn't the key problem, right? I mean, that, that's a technical problem that we can work on between now and, and signing the warrant. The, um, the, the issue we really have is how do we want to proceed with, with the, the, you know, do we feel that this is already too troublesome that we just yank it?
I do.
Right, but we.
Unless you could do this very narrow thing, and what I'm hearing is that's not possible in this timeframe. So I'm, I, I like the idea of doing a very narrow plug the whole, but if we, if I'm hearing it's not possible to get to that point in this timeframe, then I think we should delay until annual.
All right. Um, and, and of course, Mr. Sandin, that decision is not something we're going to take at the table tonight. Um, it's, it's just hearing from each of us. Um, and I'm also hearing based on that, that you don't have the time to do that narrowing language.
Not in the next six days.
Okay. And I'm looking at Ms. Barry and not seeing her think she is going to. Neither Ms. Haynor nor Mr. Lucenti are here tonight, so I'm not going to throw it on their plate.
Um, I'm happy to do it, but I don't think it could be done in six days. I think as Ms. Barry is saying, it would take quite a while. Because the select board would have to see it, and then there would be questions and comments, and then it would have to come back as, and there'd have to be some time to to, I, I don't know. It, it, I think Ms. Barry is right about that. This is not, you know, even if a miracle occurred and I could just have a narrow bylaw that appeared miraculously out of thin air tomorrow morning, I don't know that we would make the timeline.
Well, let's, um, I think, I think we've heard from all of us at the table. Um, Ms. Hayes' comments were that she did feel that this would have, it would be better to move forward with this than to move forward with nothing. Um, and we haven't heard from Mr. Lucenti. So let's, let's see how the public. Yes.
I think if there's a way that we, I think there's still parts of this we can move forward with. I don't think it's dead completely.
Right. To be clear, I mean, I, I'm trying to restate various views. It's, we don't have a full board saying it's dead.
Nope.
Um, and I know that I'm going to try to spend some time to see if I can do some drafting to bring back narrower, but I don't know that I can commit to it. And so let's see what we hear from the public next week, and then let's see where we are at our next meeting, which is October 2nd. Um, at which point we have the opportunity to remove that article if we decide it's dead. Um, in the worst cases, as we just submit a, a, um, a motion to IP, but I would, I'd rather, if we know on October 2nd that we're just not happy with where we are, I'd rather remove it from the, the text of the warrant. And so it just isn't an issue this fall.
I would agree with that.
All right. Uh, for next week, it's on the town webpage. It's not a hearing, it's a public presentation. But we're not, it's not a board meeting.
No, it's, um, I'm, I, I will basically be doing the presentation on behalf of the working group. And so it's not a public hearing. It's just a public presentation to receive public comment.
Right.
And is this in person? Is it hybrid? Is it, is it only?
Okay. Hybrid.
So, um, to, uh, muddy the water a little bit more, just to go over that last paragraph there. Um, there are a number of concerns that have been raised about the gas powered leaf blower provisions and the deadline of 2025 and whether or not um, sufficient commercial landscaping equipment that is electric or battery operated would be available um, by 2025. As the board is aware, we did receive a grant and the way that that grant has been uh, utilized was to acquire equipment for basically demonstration purposes for, uh, commercial landscapers in town. We ordered, um, a bunch of equipment and we have yet to receive it because it's all backordered and not available. And while you can go to Home Depot and buy um, a battery operated leaf blower, they're not the sufficiently sized uh, versions that a commercial landscaper would use. And so, um, there has been some suggestions made that, um, perhaps the dates should be pushed back a year to see whether or not um, equipment would be more readily available by 2026 than it would be by 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. That, um, I mean, my, my understanding of when we passed that landscaping element was on the presumption that the, the, there were the beginnings of equipment and that in the timeframe that was set, we would see, um, enough volume, commercial equipment available. Um, and I, for me, I am open to the notion of the reality, if the reality is such that that supply isn't available, that deferring the, the, um, time period for when that would start by a year would be, would meet the intent of the bylaw. You can't force people to buy something that's not really available. But it, one of the discussion items, that item did come up, I believe, when we were passing that bylaw. And it, we reflected on, this is a date we could change if the situation required it. And I think what we need to do now is, you know, just validate whether or not there is, you know, reasonably affordable and volume available equipment. Uh, and if not, I'm, I'm certainly open to extending the, the time period. Uh, Mr. Malloy, and I think the question for you is, do you feel that that's something that would need to come this fall? Or is that something that we could do at the annual town meeting in the spring?
Yeah, I think that's something that could come up, uh, at the spring town meeting.
Right. But I think it is helpful to socialize that idea now. And because I think the public is expecting that, that transition. Um, and I would, I would be happiest if we found that the equipment was available. Um, but, you know, you can't squeeze blood from a rock.
So, Mr. Pato, I, my, my feeling is, is that there's a long, there's two years between now and 2025. So, um, a lot can change in two years as we've seen in the last two years. And, um,
So that's why I'm saying.
I would, I would be uncomfortable uh, bringing an extension this far in advance of the actual date.
Right. So, Mr. Sandin, that would be next year. Right, which is 2024, which is one year in advance. And you're talking about, you have, so bylaw would go into effect next year. And, um, it, you know, landscaping companies would have to buy the equipment prior to the next year. So it's, you're talking about uh, acquisition timelines that were within the six month timeframe, if we acted on it next spring. But I don't, it's not two years away, right?
Yeah, it's not. The, the annual town meeting will be one year before, um, the commercial landscapers are prohibited from using gas powered leaf blowers.
Right. And they have to ramp up to acquiring equipment. So, but in any case, that's not a decision for us tonight. It's, it's a, it's a discussion item. And to start thinking and discussing with others. All right, Mr. Malloy, is there anything else on this topic?
Thankfully, no.
All right. Let's move on to item number two. Which is a update on update on the, um, uh, goal setting process.
Yes. And so, um, essentially, uh, where, where we're at right now is that, um, we are working on the goal of getting feedback and everything put together and compiled for the October. we are working on the goal of getting feedback and everything put together and compiled for the October 11th select board meeting. Um, John Wortman has met with the senior management team, uh discussed this goal setting process, um and will share the uh information from the senior management team with the select board um as we move forward. Um, he will also be meeting or has met with um board and committees, uh chairs in two different sessions. And I think that's about where we're at at this point. Kelly, um, did anything else occur during the past week that you would want to add?
So we have in addition to the, yes, thank you, in addition to those two, the three sessions that the senior senior management team and then the two in-person um board sessions, we have also been gathering feedback from boards and committees that were not able to attend or that had information from when they attended to that they wanted to share. So we are gathering that. Um, Kathy in our office and myself are getting that and sharing that with John, and then he's taking all of the information so that it can be ready for um the select board session on October 11th.
Thank you, Ms. uh, Ms. Axtell.
So, feedback, are we expected to get out of that, that that that's, I I I, in in my, when I'm my liaison, that's the question I get from most of the committees is what is the select board, what's what's going to be digested at, what's the select board going to be hearing out of this whole process?
Uh, the select board will be hearing what the board and committees, as well as the senior management team um really needs from the select board for them to be more effective. And that will be used as a basis for helping the select board set goals um for the next two-year period.
Can you give us any feedback in terms of how much participation we had? Were like 90% of the committees, 50% of the committees, were they participating in this?
It's it's not all of the committees. It was a select number of the committees and I would allow Ms. Axtell to respond to that because um, I have, as you know, been out of town for, on vacation until about 15 minutes before this meeting started.
Thank you. Yes, I I did get a couple of figures. We had um 10 committee members at one of the sessions and 16 at his second session. So we had a good showing and then from that we've had, I've heard from probably off the top of my head, maybe five to seven boards or committees and that and that's a mix of people that were there and just had more to say and um and separate ones that people could not attend, but they um wanted to share their thoughts on because we we gave people the option if they couldn't attend in person that we wanted them to to give us feedback um around their goals. So, and they they really enjoyed the sessions, the feedback that we got from, if I can give a little um they shared with John that they really enjoyed getting together and being able to reconnect. And I know, uh, Mr. Pato had mentioned that was one of the goals is to reconnect with the boards and committees and and get to know what they're doing and and what their thoughts are around uh the select board goal process. So it's been very positive feedback.
That's that's helpful. Um, for the board to prepare for its October 11th items, what what homework should we be assigned? Um, and will we get a um a preview of the materials that Mr. Wortman has put together? So that we are coming into the meeting having background.
Mr. Malloy, do you want me to answer that? Um, so we are, I know that Mr. Warren uh is working on compiling that information. I believe we may have given the boards and committees. Um, I just got a couple today. I think we may be giving to the end of this week to provide all of that. He is compiling all of that and then I believe he's, um, I don't know that we have a meeting on the calendar yet to go over the information, but um I'm sure, uh, I've been talking with him back and forth about some other things and I'll mention to him what's the next step. But yes, he's putting together information that will be shared, um, whether it's homework or a primer or something. So you'll have some information forthcoming. It it will be coming, but I just don't know the timeframe as of yet when you should be getting it. But yes, the expectation is that you you will get something um that so you have an idea of what's coming to the October 11th goal session.
Good. I think it'll be very helpful for the board members to have that, just like our packets, right, in preparation so that we can spend time and and hit the ground running at that meeting. All right. Um, any other questions from board members? All right, thank you, Mr. Malloy, which brings us to our last item, which is to continue the draft select board report. Um, I u- updated the um materials with the uh items that I received Monday and Tuesday. Um, so we now have all the sections except for the introduction, which I'm writing, uh, which I was waiting to have all the content so that I could merge the introduction. Um, so that will come to you later. The, as I stated on Monday, I had done some light editing. I did some light editing on on the new materials as well. But it's uh generally what you each submitted. I do believe that we can shorten this, but I didn't want to take a a heavy pen to this until you've all had a chance to see. We don't have a whole lot of time. And what I'm going to ask the the board to do is authorize me to be the final editor on this. And what I'm going to tell you is that if you do that, I will then be contacting each of you to work through your comments and reflect it on the, in the document and then bring it back to the board as a whole to see that document, but not require your approval. Structuring it that way means, you know, since it's my responsibility, it's not an open meeting law issue for me to talk to you about it. And we have all the raw material has already been available and publicly um shared. Um, so if you're willing to do that, I would propose that we, you know, we bring this to an end other than, you know, any questions you may have on on what was there. And that uh over the next week or two, you know, before our October 2nd meeting, I will have worked through this all and iterated it with you as individuals. And Ms. Barry has a few questions.
So, um, on the section on ARPA, you inserted F or someone did?
Uh, yes, no, so that, the numbers that were in that narrative didn't align with the numbers that were presented to the board on July 10th, which reflected the June 30th finals. So, but they weren't broken out in the same way, so I took what was there and just laid it out. This comes to a little over $7 million instead of $4 million. And and I, this is a placeholder for, you know, let's get the, let's get the numbers all.
Correct. So the numbers I'm reporting on are just last fiscal year's numbers and that came from a spreadsheet that Mr. Malloy provided me with as that he said was accurate as of 630. So I think what you're seeing is the chart you put in there is to date numbers would be my guess if it's a 7 million figure.
So you're talking, those numbers were the numbers spent in fiscal year as opposed to the the to date.
Correct. And that's what it says as of, well, I knew what I was writing, but those numbers are just for the last, those 12 months.
All right, that's
Those 12 months we spent the 4 million or we allocated the 4 million. We didn't spend it.
Right, I would, what was, as I was reading it, what was hitting me was that the public knows that there's about $9 million and it looks like we've only spent less than half, but the reality is we've spent, you know, over three quarters of it. Or we've we've allocated over three quarters of it.
So that was the part I I tussled with over like, should we give them all the detail of what it was allocated to as we had the prior year? Versus just giving them totals?
Yeah. No, no, I think I think uh giving totals is is efficient. You've broken it up into categories, which is fine, but not specific projects. But I do think we also should say, and this reflects year from the beginning of ARPA to now means we've now allocated up to this much as of June 30th.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then my other question was in the, um, I didn't know if we needed all the lead in to what's ARPA and what isn't. You can deal with that when you edit, because that would remove a whole chunk of stuff.
Yes.
And then my question under DEI was, um, in last year's report, um, and Mr. Malloy was on vacation, so I couldn't get these, this information from him. We did an update at the very end of it of where we were with um the Anderson Krieger report and how many of those recommendations and goals had been met. So I didn't know. So that's, I have that there in capital. Do we want to do that? That's on page nine.
Mr. Malloy, I don't know.
Scrolling him.
Yeah, I don't know if you were going to address the Anderson Krieger report in the town managers uh portion of
Um, yeah, I had not, um, but I could, or I could provide the information here. I'm happy to do it either way.
Where was multi-year? But he should re Oh, where was multi-year? I'm not having an opinion, but
No, 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 right, no, no, this
Because I'm not involved in this part at all. I just want to be clear on that, but I just think for consistency purposes, if we reported it out last year and it's a multi-year, it should be there this year somewhere.
Right, even if it's
I agree until we have completed all the recommendations of the Anderson Krieger report, at which point we should be set, but
Yeah.
All right.
So right now, um, it hasn't changed significantly in the last year because we had completed all of the different uh items uh that were recommended with the exception of um, there's a standard that's being set by the state on reporting and they still have not adopted that standard. And so that's the only thing that we haven't really met at this point in time.
Given that, I think it might be appropriate to fall under your report and just have that short note. Then we continue to monitor and we're waiting for the state.
Okay.
And it would be helpful to have the reason for it too, because if it just says 30 out of 32 and that's that, people minds may wander in a direct, different direction.
No, no, right, it it needs to say, we're we're waiting on these elements that are dependent on state action. Right, no, no, don't have to go into much more detail than that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Sandy, did you have any other questions on the on the, or should we handle this as a offline discussion?
If Ms. Barry is comfortable with what you're proposing, I am.
All right, so then I will, let me put the motion to the board so that we are clear. I move that um the board approves the rough draft in our packet for the 2020, 2023 annual report and grants the select board chair final editing authority. There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by roll call, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, so that's three zero and it passes. All right. Uh, with that, we have reached the end of our items for consideration tonight. And if there are no other comments and I see none, I'm going to move adjourn. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes, two two meetings in a row before 8 o'clock?
Uh, don't drinks it. And I'm a yes, we are adjourned. All right, thank you all.